Hello James.
Is that Roy here now?
We got Roy? Right, okay, that's great. James, are you there? Yeah. We're on live. Great colleagues, we are now live. The meeting has been formally streamed live. The Chair, councillor Roy Gladon is with us. Roy, are you there somewhere? Roy?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah. And according to the virtual protocol, I'll just run through the members' presence and ask them, can they see and hear the proceedings? So we go through the list. Councillor Roy Gladon is with us. Deputy Chair, councillor Mary Rasmussen, can you hear us, Mary?
I can, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Christine Banks, can you see and hear?
Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Cheryl Ditsbury? Thank you. Councillor William Shortall is with me. Yeah. Councillor Maria Tulane is with me in the hub here. Councillor Anna Key?
Yes, I can hear you and see you.
Thank you, Anna. Councillor Malcolm Kelly?
Yes, I can see and hear.
Thank you very much. Advisory Members, Garth Dallas?
Peter, you've got me, sorry.
Yes, yes, I can hear you, I'm here.
Got you, Garth, yeah. Laura Pai, I can see you Laura, can you see and hear us?
I can indeed, yeah.
Thanks Laura. And councillor Wendy Samson, Cabinet Member?
I can see and hear.
Thank you very much colleagues. If we could now, if I could now hand you over to councillor Gladon, the Chair, who will take us through the agenda for the evening?
Peter. Good evening everybody and thank you for your attendance and I apologise for my lateness, but I wasn't on Teams. I am now, thankfully to Roz who's here to give me a hand. Again, as I said, has everybody got a copy of the agenda?
Yep.
Good. Well, if you're turning through the agenda, yes? Everybody there? Do we have any declarations of interest?
Chair, colleagues on the committee, they would need to be prejudicial of a financial nature, meaning you'd have to log off the meeting. Are there any such declarations? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item two, appointment of Chair and Deputy Chair.
Again, Chair, the group leaders and whips for the information of committee members have decided for this year that the Chairs and Deputy Chairs of Bodies will roll forward in the current situation. So you're being asked to note that situation at item two.
Okay, everybody okay? Yep, everybody understand that?
Yes.
Thank you. Item three, selecting the new chair in 2021.
Similarly, Chair, the terms of reference in accordance with the requests of the group leaders and whips are similarly being rolled forward from last year.
Thank you. We had, William?
Yes, Chair, thank you. We have, we have an enemy.
Go ahead, William.
Yes, okay, I'll just wait for the camera to get on. Okay, that's it, that's me. Yes, Chair, I would like to replace the way it's operations with the performance and outputs.
Maybe what you have to do is explain to the committee the reason for that, why you just want some changes. And I'll come back to you then. Go ahead, William.
I was asked if you could explain the reasoning.
Oh, the reason behind it, yeah, certainly. In terms of operations really, that's why. Staff day-to-day stuff, really, I thought, I thought as a committee, you're going to be scrutinising in terms of performance and outputs, which should be, because operations remain out to be your day-to-day stuff that staff will take care of. In the context of the skills and the money, or we can change those in terms of reference and have them as well as performance and outputs, something we can scrutinise and we can see and measure in terms of what costs have been met and scrutinise them. But as the operations, that's sort of the details that we don't need to know, the director would need to know in terms of operations, so we can just say it right.
Okay.
I don't, look where the Peter's got his papers near to the mic. It's the rustling, it's really hard to hear. Because I believe we're in the same room. Just keep the papers still.
William, hopefully to, I hear what you said. Well, this has actually come from the council itself. I don't know whether a change of the word will have an impact upon what the Select Committee terms of reference are. I'm more than happy to send this over to the Constitutional Issues Committee and ask them, would the change of word have an impact upon what the terms of reference are? Because I don't wish to change some words that basically might have an impact upon what the terms of reference are. But in reality, if they're there, with permission of the group, I'll send this over and ask them, do they have a problem if you wish to change the wording? Are you happy with that? William, yeah? You're muted. William, you're muted.
Yeah. Okay, I'll hand it over to you.
You, William, you were muted at that point in time. I'm saying, I'll send it over, ask them to the wording make any difference to the terms of reference and get their opinion on it because it is theirs. Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Yes, it's okay. Thank you colleagues. Item four is the appointment of advisory members to the Select Committee. What I've done, I've set out on the agenda, those members that we had on board last year, that's a matter for the committee to determine in the future.
Thank you. First of all, welcome to the advisory members, thank you for those who've turned up. And we hope to see you more often. Is everybody happy with, we go ahead with the same members?
Can I speak?
No. Chair.
I'm happy, really.
No, I'm not sure if I can.
No, I'm asking.
Maria Tulane wishes to address the committee on that one.
Come on, Maria.
Sorry, can I just say? Thanks Chair, I just wanted to say thank you to the advisers who've been coming to all our meetings. And Claire, I know you've been a regular tenor and Laura and other people, so thank you. I appreciate what you've contributed over the last year. What I just wondered is, was there an opportunity, and sorry, and Garth, because I know Garth's been on there, I just wondered if there was an opportunity for us to look at maybe inviting just as a change of any other advisers?
Is that sort of just a question on that, or have you got something in mind?
Well, I just looked, I did have some people in mind because I looked at Roy, sorry Chair, I looked at the organisations that we fund and obviously they've been drawn, I think, mainly from that list. So I thought, could we look at that list again of funded organisations and maybe, and this is just my personal thing, I'd love to keep obviously Laura and Claire on because they have quite a lot influenced on our portfolio, but maybe just look at changing some of the other advisers from that funded organisation list, if the committee was receptive to that. Claire McCorkin?
She's the Director, she's not an advisory.
Sorry, well, it's, well, all right then, sorry. Claire, sorry Laura.
But may I say, the representatives are those there, the representative schools, Parliament, Ruth Gould, Garth, Laura, Sonia, Stuart Wade, Ronnie Goodless, I mean, a lot of them, we know, attended on a regular basis, are there today. What's your ideas?
So I was just thinking, we've got a list of the funded organisations, because I've been on the committee for a year and as I said, I apologise to you Claire, but I know Laura and some of the other organisations have been on there, but there is a list that we've got of funded organisations, which is on page 15, appendix one, and I just wondered, could we invite some of those people maybe just as a change to be advisers?
Well, if we're talking about because they're funded, there should be advisers, if anything. I mean, if we need to bring them on to have a discussion with them, we should do. I'd get more concerned or somewhat like a conflict if we're giving them money and they're sending their advisers.
Chair, may I? But would we already do that? Sorry, we're already doing that, Roy, because Africa, oh yeah, is Sonia Bassey and Sonia Bassey is one of the advisers?
Yes, but she's on for equality, it's not from the organisation.
Right.
If you understand me, she might.
It's in her record.
A lot of our advisers have more than one role they play, a lot of them play different roles and Sonia is on from a quality side of, anyway, I'll come back in a moment. Wendy?
I was just going to say that some of these people have been on, I think Sonia, as you first mentioned, and Maria was on before she was involved with Africa Coalition and recently taken up that appointment. And the appointment of the advisory members who had in relation to names forward to the committee, in relation to how they felt they advised themselves by, obviously, funded organisations, maybe where brought, I mean, I think they need to be refreshed because Ruth has actually moved out of the Met, unless she was going to come back for meetings, she's no longer in the garden, moved to Parder. Obviously, Garth, Laura, Sonia, Stuart, Ronnie and Bill are still in the city, all the others are not funded, like Sonia was brought in, but especially on disability and disability are. So, you know, that's a good turn, if, I can imagine if that was happening in mind, if they thought that, in terms of, if they were going to put in.
Can't hear it.
Wendy? Sorry, can everybody stop a moment, I don't know whether somebody's got their mute, they're not unmuted at the moment. Wendy, it's like every second word, it's like you're talking underwater, like a bubbling effect.
I think it's that committee room in Q and R, it's, that echoes, because it's the children in Q and R when people are in those rooms, echo that on a meeting earlier today.
Listen then, this is unusual, can I speak to Peter please? Peter? What is the normal position if members want to change? I've never been there, but this is actually for, if someone wishes to change it.
Chair, it's a matter, it's a matter.
What is the process?
It's a matter for the Select Committee to appoint their advisory members.
Yes, I'm trying to say that what process is it? Are people, did you have to put it forward?
Basically, if members.
I mean, this is, what I'm trying to say, this has come up, don't get me wrong, I mean, it's been said, but it's come out of the blue, so I imagine members would have wanted to talk about it. But I mean, this is, if there's a need or people feel a need for the change for whatever reason, I think it'd be a good idea if we knew changing to what, not changing just on the basis and could we bring, pull it over to the next committee meeting? And then, and then we'll have names and the reasoning for it, because sometimes to freshen up is good, but who are we freshening up with? And people have an idea then of whether or not they would go along with it.
Chair, there's a couple of indications, Colleen and Laura Pai would be wishing to speak on this one.
Will you bring them in then, thank you.
Yeah, Colleen, thank you.
Peter, I'm happy to have Laura go first because I know her hand's been up for quite some time and I'll speak after Laura.
Thanks, Colleen, Laura. She's unmuted, unmuted Laura.
There we go. Sorry, I was just going to clarify that I thought to be advising, you weren't allowed to be a funded organisation, so I was just going to clarify that NML are not funded by Liverpool City Council. And I thought that that was, and I was also going to make the point that's been made in the chat that Ruth and that Wendy made as well, that Ruth has left the city, so maybe a replacement for Ruth would be a good idea.
Laura, thank you for the information. We discussed that the other day, but we weren't sure whether Ruth had left the city and wasn't participating anyway. And we were going to get the information and we put it back to committee once we had it confirmed by here. So that could be a vacancy anyway, of a specific area.
My, sorry Chair, it's Colleen Martin. My point was actually going to be to reinforce your suggestion as a way forward, which is to be clear as to the expertise which each of the adviser brings to the committee and to look at the expertise that the committee requires going forward and bring that as an agenda item to the next committee, should we need to refresh or revise any of the adviser positions. Obviously, we did have the discussion the other day about Ruth Gould and her expertise, particularly around disability and what that would look like going forward. So I think it's for, my understanding and Chair and other committee members is whilst the organisations are identified in some instances, the advisers are there because of their expertise and their skills and their knowledge that they bring to the committee, not necessarily representing the organisations next to their names. So I think that's why it's important to make that clear. So, and as Laura has identified, they're not necessarily funded in that way. So I would suggest Chair, that that would be my recommendation to the committee.
Okay. Is everybody happy if we do it as I suggested before, that if any committee?
Chair, councillor Harry Doyle.
Peter? Sorry.
Harry Doyle. Harry?
No, sorry Chair, I was only going to add what you've said, I think to move forward, because I know we've got a big agenda. I think at the moment, we should agree what we've actually got on paper, I think we've got fantastic advisers to the committee, so I think we should agree that. I think Maria should probably bring to the next meeting if we've got suggestions to add on, as addition, not get rid of people, just as addition, that would be great. I think we should bring her to the next committee. So I agree with Colleen, basically.
Chair, nominations, if you're happy, and we'll look at them for next time.
I think we have to make it clear now then, that's what we've been told, we're waiting for the information, that Ruth is no longer an adviser, so we've got a vacancy there. And if members, Peter, if you send out to members, specific areas that the advisory members cover, it might be easy, because you know, there is to be said, if people are on the committee who are getting resources off the authority, then there can be a conflict of interest anyway, so we've got to be careful. But look, we can do that and we'll make, we'll go up in the next meeting and have a discussion about it, are everybody's happy? Yeah? Okay?
Thanks Chair.
We start it by thumbs, everybody happy with that? Just a thumb?
Is everybody happy? No one to the contrary? Thank you colleagues. Chair, through you again, the next item is the minutes of your last ordinary meeting, which just takes us back to the 10th of March. I don't see there are any matters arising, but if the committee would like to endorse the minutes, they're invited to do so.
Everybody happy to have the correct record?
Yes.
You see the matters arising from them?
No.
No, thank you very much, we'll move on.
Chair, that takes us to our Cabinet Member, councillor Simon, to provide a usual update. Thank you.
Thanks Wendy.
First of all, I apologise for my written report not coming through, you will get it in a couple of days, I've been on leave for my first day back in today, I had to take it from this morning, but I've literally been in back-to-back meetings since about seven this morning and just one thing after another when you've been off, so apologies. And the meeting was changed as well, because obviously I had leave and Roy had leave when we were trying to fit the dates in, so apologies if other people have had to change their plans as well. I mean, my report was going to be fairly brief, although it's been a long time since we had a committee. I think a lot of what would have been in my report is probably covered on the agenda tonight, because we are getting updates from most of the service areas. I wanted to first start of all, start first of all though, by thanking all of our staff and the work that they have put in throughout this period from March to date. Many of our staff have worked through some of the most difficult tasks that any of us have ever experienced in our lifetime and perhaps might never experience again. Loads of staff outside of their comfort zone into doing work that, you know, has been really new to them, they've worked with new teams. And I'd also like to place on record my thanks as well to our business community, our community organisations who's been second to none, who've all come together to work together to ensure particularly that the most vulnerable in the city have been supported through this time. We've also had members of staff who have lost loved ones or have had loved ones who've been extremely ill through this period and we've also had a number of staff who have left and there's quite a number of them as well who've left during this time. But I'd particularly like to mention David Stoker, who has been our head of libraries, who took over from Joel Keane, who unfortunately has left quite recently in the month of September, but actually while I was away on holiday as well, and I think it would be remiss of us not to mention that, because obviously he's had to reopen and now all the libraries aren't yet reopened. But certainly, you know, to pass on our wishes from the committee for his many years in the library service, the majority of them being with Liverpool. As I said, it's been an extremely challenging time and continues to be challenging, particularly operationally and getting our buildings open again. We have started to see the opening of some leisure centres, of some libraries, and each of those buildings bring with them their own difficulties, sometimes because they're co-located with other organisations, sometimes because of the layout or the age of them and how difficult that is to actually make them safe, both for our staff and for the service users that will be going into them. And hopefully, dependent on obviously what's happening with Covid numbers rising, at the moment, we are hoping to open more as we go forward. And as always, you know, we are consulting with councillors in those wards in advance of that notice going public. And thanks to all the councillors who've been good at feeding the information in when communication hasn't been working quite as assured. I think some of the work that our staff have done, a lot of it people may not be aware of, and it's been wide and varied, from working in the centralised food hub, in the PPE hub, we've had staff from the town hall actually working within our crematorium service and stuff, so they've all been doing very, very different things. We did have quite a number of staff shielding at one point and obviously coming back into work where you're in a very public-facing job, meeting many, many members of the public, that is quite a difficult time for people and certainly, you know, we have asked people to be mindful of that, because as well as them wanting to provide an excellent service, it does actually raise, you know, some issues for people, while there are people who are really chomping at the bit to get back into the workplace and to get some sort of routine back into their lives, there are a lot of people who are extremely anxious and it certainly is impacting on their own health and wellbeing and their own mental health. As I said, most of the agenda items will be covering sort of where the portfolio is up to. In relation to budget, it's going to be a very, very challenging time for us. Obviously, we've had our income cut, because obviously we've been not able to do events, we've not been able to have our leisure centres open and obviously we've, we had to stop the membership from them, but certainly we still have to maintain them, we still have to pay staff, et cetera. So, you know, we've had a double whammy in a sense of being, having to look at, review how we meet some of those budget savings we're required, but also at the same time in not being able to generate that income. I think we've done some quite really good stuff as well, which you'll hear about as well, working alongside other departments, I think that's been really good in that people are starting working together much more closely. That started during Covid-19 more so, and I think the more joint working and people understanding people's role is going to help us going forward on moving things through the council sausage machine, you know, a lot more efficiently. I think as well, sort of our Without Walls programme and stuff in a sense of trying to get the city up and running and supporting businesses, but as we know, there's also a whole range of people, particularly in the culture, leisure and hospitality sector, who fall outside of a lot of those furlough schemes and other schemes and are really struggling. And I think certainly some of the restrictions taking place that have had to come in because of rising numbers over the last few weeks and the potential of perhaps a further lockdown is a real worry to us as a city, given the importance that culture, tourism and hospitality do play. That said, you know, we've had some fantastic cultural opportunities take place online. Actually, we've got some new audiences that we've not had before and people being willing to try new experiences by actually going online and looking at that whereas they might have been more reluctant to go into a theatre, into an art gallery, you know, or, you know, sort of into seeing a live performance, even in public, they may have thought it wasn't for them. And certainly the feedback that we've had from organisations who've put a lot of content online has been fantastic. I'd just like to thank everybody on the committee, all of our partners, who have actually been fantastic throughout, you know, whenever they've had a query, they've come through and, you know, that's been dealt with and certainly, you know, people do understand as well as, you know, sitting on this committee, people are representing their residents and certainly in respect to libraries, leisure centres, et cetera, particularly, you know, in the halls, you know, people are wanting to use the facilities and, you know, we're getting quite frustrated at the moment, which, you know, I can understand. In respect of our halls, we did agree a capital programme some time back and it's good to see that that's now starting as well and we approved again a cabinet last week some of the spends that was agreed for Croxtop Hall. And as we said, you know, when I said earlier about us working in partnership, a lot of that Without Walls money came from some of our capital programme that we were going to do within the city halls, and we recognised the need, you know, in the communities to do that and then obviously look at in the future where we get some of that capital expenditure going forward. So Chair, sort of that agreed one through, as I say, there are some detailed reports going through, but happy to take any questions.
Thank you Wendy. Before I bring members in, I should, I would have done this at the beginning if I had not been reading it on. If I can read something out to. Is everybody? Sorry, someone making a cup of tea, a lot of noise. Peter?
Yes Chair.
This is, Wendy's already mentioned David Stoker. David has given many, many years of marvellous service to the City Council. So it was live, he's an information service, so if I could just read something out which I've done and hopefully the committee will agree. David has worked for 37 years in archives in the libraries and has worked for actually Liverpool Central Library for over 25 years. He ran his career as head of the Liverpool Recording Office and joined Simon's role, he raised over a million pounds to secure the prestigious Everton Football Club collection for the library. He has ensured, that makes a colleague happy anyway, who's sitting at the top. He has ensured this important collection was preserved for the future generations and accessible to all in the archive. David then became central library manager in 2013, followed by lately interim head of service. David has played a key role in central library and the archive redevelopment and the success of the development can be seen in the visitor numbers attracted every year. And the success of the development can be seen in the visitor numbers attracted every year. The success of the redevelopments has exceeded everyone's expectations and it is rightly regarded as world class. And David has played a large part in this. David has always championed the library and the archive and the services achieved archive accreditation in the National Archives in 2017. He was an expert on archives and their importance to the city's heritage. I'm sure you will join me in placing on record our sincere appreciation of David's work and long term commitment to the library and information service, while extending of every good wish for a long and happy retirement. I've asked for committee clerk to write to David accordingly and I hope the committee will join him with me. Yes? I'm very okay with that. Thank you very much. Right, Peter, can you now start bringing people in because you've got them all on screen.
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Anna Key.
I can't hear you, Anna.
Can you hear me now? So I would like to.
Sorry, Anna, Peter, I think you need to move your mic. That's where the disturbance is from.
Is this better?
Lovely, Anna.
Okay. Yeah. So I would like to associate myself with all the positive remarks made about David Stoker. And it is indeed a great loss to the library service. And I have two questions to the cabinet member, one related to the libraries. How the recruitment is progressing for the central library manager and head of service? Because I imagine there'll be two positions to be filled. And another question is about electronic warfare Europe arms fair, which is due to take place in ACC Exhibition Centre Liverpool from 16th to 18th of November 2020. So it is a belief of many people that this event should not be held in Liverpool. The purpose of this event is to facilitate meetings of military delegations from around the globe with international arms companies. And that's in order to arrange sales of the latest warfare technology. It's obviously has serious implications for people's lives around the world. So my question is, will the cabinet member, in her capacity as a representative on the ACC committee cancel this meeting? Thank you.
Wendy?
Hi, Anna. Yeah, I mean, it's not my, I don't have the authority individually to cancel a meeting. Can I say that has been talks with ACC Liverpool? There will be, I've just come back from leave today. So obviously I've said I want to speak to some people this week. Also, I know from our past discussions, I've said, obviously, we need to set up some sort of process of looking at how the events come through because obviously as a city council, we own the building, but they run that building. So we don't oversee the development. But certainly Joe and I do sit on the board of ACC Liverpool. So certainly looking at a process for looking at that management. But certainly I know a number of questions have come in this week as well and last week. A freedom of information stuff, stuff that's being dealt with by the mayor from August. When we just being back from leave today, I wouldn't want to give that a full answer to this now because obviously I might miss some of that stuff out, as I say, only got back today. But certainly that is being looked at and certainly a process being looked at going forward. And certainly I'll get back to all committee members with something in writing in respect of that. But certainly it has been noted and certainly I know ACC Liverpool have also responded to various organisations, including the Green Party as well, on certain key points that have been asked of them. So if I can bring that all together, so we can get a response back to people. Would it be more useful if it had been done in a question? Because then if I'm not available or whatever, if you write the questions in, then that gives the opportunity for us to get proper responses rather than on the spot. Because then obviously we can sometimes not give the up to date information. But certainly we'll get back to you with a fuller response in relation to that and how, you know, going forward, we can look to sort of how we address some of the issues around that. Because obviously it is, it is a business and it's not run by the city council. It is run independently, although we do, as you say, own the building. So we'll get back to you with a fuller response for that, Anna.
Did you, I think there was two questions. Wendy?
Sorry. First one on the library.
Do you want to remind Wendy the second one?
Was it the one about the recruitment process for the libraries? Obviously, we will need to recruit for that process. But in respect of all our services now, there's ongoing reviews in respect of that. But certainly, you know, there will be somebody, you know, overseeing that role till, you know, an appointment is made in the future as we would ordinarily do.
Thank you, Wendy. Anybody else?
Chair, councillor Shortall would like to raise a question.
William?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, thanks, Jim. There we go. Brilliant. I'm all in my gender there. Thanks for your presentation, Wendy. It's very useful. I just got a question. I got asked by a resident in the light of a high profile recruitment, does the Liverpool Museum of Galleries HR policies on safeguarding, are they all in place?
Obviously, that's a question I can't answer because obviously we don't run the national museums Liverpool by their title. They're run by national museums. I'm sure Laura would give, but they do have safeguarding policies as do all organisations. But as I said before to Anna, if people have questions, this is my memory report, we do also have a question. If people have specific questions for the select committee, it is really helpful if they put them in writing in advance so you can get a full response because it's very difficult on the night. But in relation to safeguarding policies of national museums Liverpool, that it wouldn't be our HR, it would be HR of national museums Liverpool. They're not funded by Liverpool City Council.
William, you're on mute. William, you're talking, but you're on mute. Okay, Wendy. William, can you? You okay with that?
Tell me, yeah. So can you hear me now? Jim, can you?
We can hear you now.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I did submit a question on the 13th of September and called the chair and Peter answered that question. So, but thanks for your answer. I didn't realise that. Thank you.
Sorry, William, did you say you submitted it to me?
Yes, I did. On the 13th of September, I asked that question at 22:00 hours, 12:00 AM.
Someone's muted again.
Chair, if I could clarify that, the matter was phrased as an item of business. There may be some misunderstanding.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I think, I think what Wendy's saying is quite specific. You get a much better response if, if it is submitted earlier. William, we take what it is. As Peter said, he misunderstood what it was about. So we'll take that on board. But I think as a point of clarification, we'll make sure every question is in. So after you want to put up an answer to it, it's always better. Okay, anybody else? Nobody else, Peter? Okay, thanks, Wendy. Thank you very much.
Councillor Christine Banks, please.
All right, sorry.
All right, Roy, I'll let you off this time. Wendy, just a quick one. And it's a number of people have asked me updates on the swimming pool at Everton Park. Is there any? Thanks.
Not at this point in respect of, we are working through the various. And as soon as we've got any information, I will be letting councillors know. And particularly if you've had people, I know it's not in your wall, but obviously a lot of people in central ward do use Everton Park that I'm aware of. And certainly I've had a number of people on to me and they have been on to my site as soon as we can get. We've had it, you know, over a number of the issues. As I say, some of the buildings leave themselves much more easily to open, to do the social distancing and whatever, and the older buildings are more difficult. I can watch the room with that out there, that isn't a backhanded way to try and close the facility. You know, it is all about making sure that the buildings are safe, both for the staff and for the people using them and for the school using them. Because obviously the school use that facility as well, not to down. So, you know, it is something that I know Mike and the team are working on. You know, and as soon as we've got any updates, they will be going out there and, you know, that notification will go to all councillors and then on to all councillors as it has done with the opening of all the others. Thanks for that, Wendy.
Anna, you have another question?
Christine, Christine just gave me the idea. An update on a Sefton Park library opening?
Yeah, that's similar. As I say, we've been doing them in stages. And certainly, you know, again, it's down to safety issues also in relation to staffing. Because we've also got staff across these libraries and certainly, you know, sort of getting the right number of libraries open. We are mindful as well at the point where the first ones did open. There was also the COVID increase in Princess Park where community buildings weren't open as well. So that wasn't an option at that point. So it is, all of the libraries are continuing to be reviewed around their opening. And now I'm back this week, I'll get a further update. As soon as we've got any updates on all the libraries, we will get in touch with the local councillors to let them know in advance. But they are all being looked at to open as soon as possible. As I said before though, I don't know what the current, with the current rises, how that will impact on our programme going forward. And likewise, if there is a change, I'll let people know as well. Because obviously, as I left, we were looking to gradually, you know, open more and more, you know, as each month progressed. But I don't know whether, obviously, we all don't know what's going to happen in the next few weeks, given the current situation. But again, if there's any changes to our plan, you know, I'll speak with Colleen and Chris in community services in respect of the leisure centres and libraries. And we'll get a briefing out to people. And we might, I might do that anyway, just so people are fully up to date where we're at.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anybody else? No, thank you very much. We'll move on to item six.
Chair, the motion is in the name of councillor Lawrence Brown, who's apologised for the meeting this morning. So we need to invite another member to the committee to move the motion.
Do we have a mover? Anna, do we have a second there?
I don't think a second there is needed for committee.
I'm asking because someone might want to speak. I know, but I'm asking this. Anna, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I just would like to follow me, follow me a bit. I'm not particularly going to speak.
Okay.
To it, just basically in terms of the strategy, the timeline for 2023 to 2030 states reducing environmental impact to net zero, which is all good. But why wait until 2023 before starting to do this? So, you know, we've, we all agreed over a year ago that we've got climate emergency. So we need to act as, you know, accordingly. So that's why, that's the purpose of this motion.
Okay, well, what I'm asking you to do, because you're taking Lawrence's place on this, is to withdraw the motion. The reason I'm asking you to do that is because this, what you have at the moment is for the 2023 cultural strategy is out for consultation. It's actually being consulted upon now. No decision to be made. There's not even a draft report has come. If we start having resolutions, that ties the hands of committee or people who are looking at it. I've no problem about sending it on to the cultural strategy for them to look at it. But I can't, I don't, I can't accept that the committee can make a decision that would tie their hands. Because at the moment, they are actually looking at every issue for the cultural strategy. And I would imagine, once we get the cultural strategy coming forward to committee, we'll have every opportunity then to move resolutions, motions or whatever, to make any changes that are necessary. At the moment, it's not even in draft form because it's for consultation. So would you agree to withdraw this? And I'll send it on to them.
No, I can't. I believe Peter had a conversation with Lawrence about it yesterday.
Okay, well, look, I'm advising, I'm advising members to reject it. Because you can't, you cannot vote on something that is out for consultation. It goes against every concept of it. Consultation means to discuss the matter before a decision is made. This is asking us to make a decision before consultation even finishes. So I'm asking members to vote against it. Will you take the vote, please, Peter?
Thank you, Chair. If members would bear with me in this new protocol while I call their names, if it indicates for against the motion. Councillor Gladden?
Against.
Councillor Rasmussen? Councillor Christine Banks?
Against.
Councillor Sheldon Disbury? Councillor Disbury? Councillor Harry Doyle?
On the basis that councillor Brown's actually already responded to the consultation with this comment, against.
Thank you. Councillor Shortall?
Against.
Against. Councillor Toulon?
Against.
Against. Councillor Anna Key?
Four.
Four. Thank you. Just bear with me one moment, colleagues. The voting is on those in favour of the motion one and those against six. On that basis, Chair, the motion has been lost. Thank you. That takes us then to the next item on the agenda, item eight, which is also a motion in the name of councillor Alan Tormey. I think councillor Tormey is on the call somewhere.
Will you bring him in then, Peter?
Yes, councillor Tormey? Councillor Tormey, are you on the call? I did have an indication earlier, Chair, doesn't seem to be with us. And the motion would need to be moved or it will fall. Chair, do I have a move? Can I see you just to move the motion?
Chair? Malcolm? Because I'm subbing on this committee in place of councillor Cavill Stoppely. So can I move this motion in the name councillor?
Thanks, Malcolm. Chair?
Right, I think we need to advise committee, and I'm quite sure they will recall that recently we considered a motion that had to identify the suitable local authority buildings and other organisations, other structures within the council that are cost neutral, that would be implemented to facilitate the display of works of art for young or all budding artists. Because of course, for them to display their artistic ways with the gallery would cost them a lot of money. That is at the moment is in process. The committee noted that in support of young artists, the DOT organisation, which we're doing, there's several places now controlled by the LCC, which are going to be suitable for art and the exhibition of art. This is talking about, of course, the highways, because we're talking about, let's be honest, the traffic lights, et cetera, et cetera. So I believe we've already got something going and anything just cuts across it. So really, I'm hoping that colleagues will agree it supports the resolution that we moved. So what I'm saying, that I'm asking firstly, Malcolm, he might not know about it, but it is there. This kind of thing can be taken into consideration with it. So that's in reality, that's, we could ask you to stand it down because I can't support it on the basis that it changes what we already have. So are you prepared to withdraw it?
You know, obviously, I'm not aware of that particular detail. But, you know, you mentioned the stuff that you're already looking at in relation to council buildings. And I think you're quite right, just looking at this, because I've only just come on to this meeting at the last minute. I was only notified a short while ago. And looking at this motion, it does seem to talk about, as you say, art within the community and also involving. And also involving, you know, students and people within the community. Who, I guess, may not necessarily, in normal circumstances, have the opportunity to express themselves. And this is an opportunity for them to express themselves. Now, I don't know what, whether what you've just talked about includes any of this. But I think it would be nice that if there is something in the process of being reported on. Whether this could also be included in that in conjunction.
Well, just to make it clear, what, what we are talking about was for libraries, centres, community facilities, anything of which we have responsibility for or some access to. So that, that was there. The other part that he talks about is traffic lights and they're the highways. We don't have authority to agree that we can do anything with, with anything. It's street furniture. And the street furniture is the highways department, not ours. So what I'm trying to say is, we've already got something going through, Malcolm. This, actually, if anything, sort of, it doesn't vary it at all. But this is talking about the highways departments as well. So I can't accept it because I'm, I'm not going to make decisions on this commission for the highways.
Yeah, you, you know, and I understand that, but, you know, obviously, in fairness to myself, you know, I'm not the author of the motion and I wouldn't like. And I wouldn't like to withdraw that motion and obviously, if I can, I can keep it, if I can keep it on the table to, for a decision to be made. You know, at the end of the day, it, it, it's not asking for a specific decision to be made on this. It's simply asking for a report to be drawn up on it and presented to a future meeting.
Well, I think it, it goes a little bit further than that when one looks at the whole of the motion. But anyway, it is there. He can have it by, by, we are the long way down the road on the other things and, well, have already mentioned. And, and we'll take this, this on board and his meaning of it. But if you can't withdraw this, I'm just advising members to vote against it. Because I'm not going to make decisions for the highways department.
Chair, councillor Simon.
Wendy?
Thanks, Chair. It was only to say, Malcolm, in respect of, obviously, I understand your predicament and obviously, I'm not a member of this committee. But maybe if councillor Torme didn't, isn't aware of that, and just withdrawing it at this point, you know, rather than have people voting against it. And him being brought up to date with what was happening in respect of community, public art. And then obviously, there's no emergency to this, you know, insane, because actually getting a director to draw up a report at this time when there's other things going on. But if, if we could take away what was currently going on, you know, that, that may be, you know, sort of a withdrawal till you can speak to him. Obviously, he has the opportunity to put it forward to other committees if, if he wanted to, because there's no urgency in, in the timescale of this, I should imagine.
Yeah, no, as I said, I do understand. I think, you know, I don't know what research Alan has done on this. Insofar as what, what you're talking about. You know, conversations can always be had with, with the highways department. You know, I understand that street furniture is highway, it's a highways department. But those conversations, as I say, could be had. And I think, you know, from my point of view, as it stands today, you know, if it can stay on the table and, and, you know, see, see where it goes. And equally, I can then have a conversation with councillor Torme.
I think what Wendy suggested, Malcolm, was that if you want to withdraw it, and you can always retain it. If you want to, we can send it to highways, because if anything, whatever is, what he's asked for there is already happening. If he wants the street furniture to do it, it's going to need the highways department and not us.
And, and, and even in that regard, if, if it's something that needs to go to the highways department through regeneration, I guess, well, you know, he can equally submit a motion to that particular select committee. But I think, you know, the, the difficult position that I'm in today is that, you know, I've not had any indication from councillor Torme that he would be happy for this to be withdrawn at this point. So, you know, I, I don't want to put myself into any other position.
Malcolm, Malcolm, because we love you, we'll take the problem away, I'll take the problem away from you. I'm advising members to vote against it. That is, you have no problem with it. It's nothing to do with you. We're ganging up on you.
Yeah.
So I'm advising members to vote against it.
Would you like to call it, Chair?
Take the vote, please, Peter.
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, if I can ask for indications for or against the motion. Councillor Gladon, Chair.
Against.
Councillor Rasmussen, Deputy Chair. Councillor Banks?
Against.
Councillor Doyle?
Against.
Councillor William Sholto?
Against.
Against. Councillor Maria Toulon?
Against.
Against. Councillor Anaki?
Abstain, please.
Abstain?
Yes, if possible.
And councillor Kelly?
I'm for.
Chair, that's one for the motion. Six against and one abstention. The motion's lost.
Thank you.
Chair, that takes you on to the next phase of the agenda. Which is effectively the reports which your officers have produced, as councillor Simon has also referred to. Which provide a sequence of updates on service areas. So if we could move on to item nine, which is the Culture Arts Investment Programme update.
And before, before we go on to it, I think it's, this, of course, as a Zoom meeting, is, is much, much, it's different than the normal type of meeting we have when we're in the town hall. Which we usually have supporting, nice pictures from our offices and televisions and all my stuff, popcorn and ice cream. On this occasion, we, we've got the report, I'm, I'm hoping, and I'm sure this has been, that everybody's read the reports, as they always do. So if, if I can, it'd just be that for the officers to not go through the whole seven to twenty-eight, which is twenty-one pages of it. But just to highlight the significant parts that you believe the committee should know about, and then we'll take questions. Okay?
Yeah, and, and thanks, everyone. I think, as I said on the chat, I think a lot's happened since our last committee meeting. And just a really quick bit of background in terms of what, what the culture team's been doing. Half of them went straight to work on the food hub, developed a food hub and did the volunteering programme. And that was the events team that, that, that did that. So instead of running events over the summer, they've, they've been running that service for the vulnerable residents of the city. Alicia, who's on the call now, will come in with this report. But what Alicia and Shaun and the team in the art participation team are doing. Is looking after our cultural organisations and making sure that when this happens, that they were looked after properly. And especially in terms of their freelance workers, that they could continue to support their freelance workers and continue to support the cultural offer of the city. Albeit in abeyance at the moment. And it was a big shock to the sector. Those of you who've got friends, have got colleagues who enjoy the cultural offer of our city. Will know what it's done to that sector. And just a headline for you really, which I think is really important to stress, forty-seven percent of our business rates come from this sector. So they come from the cultural sector, the retail sector, the tourism, the tourism economy sector. That's two hundred and seventy million into its essential services. So for us as a city, it's important we get this sector on its feet as quickly and as safely as we can. So that's just the background. We're not going to go through the pain before you. Alicia, can I just bring you in if you've got any points or Shaun? Alicia first, that's okay.
I just think for, you need to slow. Shaun and I, no, no, it's Shaun and I in the same room, so he's just loaded down, otherwise we're going to echo. We're in, we're in the office, we're downstairs on the first floor. And just really just to highlight, if you have read it, literally it's about our arts organisations. Even though we have been in lockdown, have still been open. And I think that is the most key thing about all of this in the last five months. They have been absolutely amazing how they have actually transferred all their work onto online. And have still been working and still been working with their communities, lots of access and stuff. And we're all slowly reopening and starting to bring audiences back into spaces. And as Claire said, we're really working with them to actually look at that. Our next stage is to actually have one-to-ones with all our arts organisations, because as you know, a part of that looking after has been a lot of emergency to begin with. Trying to support them, getting our funds out there as quickly as we could to them. And we've been on all the different networks that have been happening. And but then I, I'm sure after the furlough finishes, we are going to see some of our sector struggling even more. And we, as, as Culture Liverpool, will be supporting them as a city. But that's where, that's our next stage really. And I think I just need to raise that as part, as a concern that will be happening. I'm sure we, we have already started to lose, we've been losing staff in some of our arts organisations. So I think that will continue. Shaun, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just to give committee members a, a, a quick update on the, on the whole, the whole of the report really. programmes in its second year. We developed the application process a couple of years ago. And the framework for it supports the inclusive growth programme, now the city plan as, as it's evolved into. So if COVID hadn't happened, I think the report that we'd be delivering would be slightly different. It still wouldn't be entirely positive. Because, you know, we've had to reduce grant funding to a lot of the organisations and it is starting to have an impact during twenty nineteen, twenty. On the kind of outputs and outcomes that we were expecting. And we've got quite detailed statistics on how that's changing over time. Essentially, you know, as much as we put into it, the more we get out of it. And, and we can actually prove that from the statistics that we get. But it is one of the best things that the council does, you know, it's a really positive programme. It brings lots of audience to the city, you know, four point five one million audience isn't untypical. You know, we've got data from year on year that, that proves that the case. But also, they're all very, very connected into the communities and very rooted in the communities. And there's lots of kind of user-led approaches that, that the, the sector uses. So they are a success story. It's something that we need to consider as very precious and something that we need to do our best with to retain. A lot of the work that, around the new cultural strategy is around that. And that has also been hijacked by the, by the pandemic. Because now we're going to have to react to that. And we can't, it makes it more difficult for us to look at the medium and long term. But that's where we are with the cultural strategy. And the pillars of that will be around the contribution that the cultural sector makes, both to the community and to the visitor economy of the city. And as Alicia said, we're, we're due to meet them all very soon, you know. To give you an idea of where we're at, the, the turnover of the organisations is quite astounding really for the. We formed around ten percent of what they do. So in, in twenty nineteen, twenty, the kind of, the income that was coming in was around twenty-nine million pounds. They were raising from other sources around the, you know, external sources from arts council, from trusts and foundations, sponsorship. That's going to change this year because of what's happened. And, and the projections that they've given us now are showing twenty-three million pounds. So nearly seven million pounds is going to be lost this year. And the sector's got reserves of around thirteen million, which sounds like a lot, but they're going to lose about three million of that. So the whole thing is going to start hanging in the balance. It's not there at the moment. And we will be able to report further once we've met with them all and discussed where they're at. But it is an area of concern for us. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Wendy, do you want to add anything to it?
Sorry, I need to put my volume back up now.
Harry, I have a question, as answers up, so I'll come in after people have asked questions.
Bye, Wendy.
Alicia, what are they saying? I can't hear anything.
They're saying it was a great report, Shaun.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Peter, thanks, Chair. Yes, thanks for the report. And I think of all sectors, obviously affected by the pandemic. Obviously seeing culture's been hugely affected, you know, across the world really. And it's something that, you know, it's going to be a massive challenge for the city council and the sector to obviously address over the next, well, however, nose long. My question would just regards, on page thirteen, the equalities implications. I'm obviously very disappointed to see the very small figure supporting of the LGBT community. And also of the people of lower, lower socio-economic status. Obviously, at the bottom of there does note that, you know, there's issues with proportion of LGBT and lower socio-economic. The former being the LGBT section has been affected by the loss of Liverpool pride from the portfolio, because that's now funded by the combined authority. I think that really highlights actually that sort of our view on LGBT groups. Because I'd be interested to know what the percentage of LGBT, the percentage for LGBT group would have been with pride. Because that is just one day. And there are so many fantastic organisations supporting both young and old LGBT people in the community. And, you know, I find that percentage very disappointing, that, that we are supporting. And just on that, on that paragraph, it does obviously mention that there are issues of methodology and collection of, of that data. Because obviously, it's, it's quite hard to gather, particularly with lower socio-economic status, particularly when people are accessing the service. And may not actually declare what their status is. My question on that part, the second part, is these are organisations that we are funding and we're giving funding to. Why aren't we not being more robust in terms of the data they're providing us? Because it does say on there that, that some are better than others in doing so, so more proactive in getting that. And can we not be more robust when we're giving out funding, that we make sure that those groups do actually monitor that, please?
I mean, were there any other questions before I come back? I mean, certainly, you know, we do value the role of the LGBT community play in our cultural sector. And they are funded outside of Pride. And as you've said, we, you know, we fund Homotopia, we, we fund a number of projects through other mainstream organisations. You also, also employ freelancers as well. And as you say, the, the robustness of information, that's certainly, I'm sure, something that Shaun and Alicia will take back. What we have to say is some of the organisations have better capacity than others. Because obviously, some are funded more, some are bigger organisations and have specific staff. When you look at some of our smaller organisations, some of the, what we know as the cool organisations, you know, the smaller organisations. Obviously, it can become a lot more difficult where you've got, you know, one or perhaps two funded people who were running that organisation. In getting more detailed data. But that's not an excuse for not, for us not to push in getting that and saying that we can put that to them when they're having the one-to-ones, have some feedback through that. But certainly, you know, and even in getting that low socio-economic, even looking at postcodes, that doesn't even tell you that really. That, you know, that doesn't give you a true reflection, although it can be part of an indicator. So certainly, particularly through our community project, that's why a lot of the work that we've been trying to do. And certainly, we're really linking to the city plan through the inclusive growth plan, is getting that feedback from the communities as well. On how these things are touching them and how it's going through them. So I think it's part of that bigger picture, Harry. And I think it's a really important question to ask and certainly in saying of, of how people are collecting data. Because as you say, some people may just choose not to give it, but I'm sure that's not the whole picture. And certainly, where we've got organisations that have got the capacity to get that information. I, I know Alicia and Shaun will push them following this meeting to try and get that more robustly. I'm glad to see in the report that it is specifying some of those equality things and it's not just the broad statements which we have asked for, you know, going forward. So thanks for the staff for doing that. But I think they're really valid points.
Anna, councillor Sholto?
Hang on, hang on. Anna, are you okay with that?
No, that's great. And yeah, just to echo what Wendy said, you know, I think it's great to see that breakdown. So thank you to Alicia and Shaun. So yes, thank you.
Councillor Sholto, Chair.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the report, Claire. I just want to know, as any of the full-time staff have been furloughed. And the other thing I want to know, you know, post-COVID, these are really challenging times for a company. We, we, we rely on the tourism, but I want to point out to any members above the bottom that we do have a planned economic recovery plan on page ten. It points out what the downsides are, but what the upsides are as well in terms of what we are doing to, to try and bring tourism, you know, back and our long-term plans. But although COVID is a very serious thing, it's, it's not a behavior error. Draw vaccines out there again. And develop, as we speak, I was listening to really folks more about vaccine, yet develop British vaccine. So I, I would like. So, um, I I would like to reassure members of the board we are doing all we can and need not, with the plan, to help towards all we can. But I'd just like to go off further if there's any further questions, if that's possible.
Most of the larger organisations, William, did furlough staff where they could, obviously to keep the organisations going. Um, some, um, not all staff were furloughed, but quite a number of the organisations did furlough staff, obviously. Um, and how that will play out as, you know, as that furlough scheme ends, as was said earlier. You know, in our discussions, you know, that's going to impact right across all industries. And certainly, um, I think Liverpool's been one of the leading ways of having a recovery plan going forward, as you've just said. And it's been really important that we have been able to use the skills of this sector, working alongside our business sector. You know, likes of, you know, Bill Addy, who from the bid and other people in working together. And and with our communities as well, in a in a sense of using those skills to, um, obviously keep people in employment. But also actually to get messages across and support communities during this time. So, yeah, I agree with you. It is really important. But, yeah, almost all, I would say, of the organisations, unless there's just a couple of people, did furlough staff. It was the only way for for them to survive, um, at that time.
Thanks, Wendy. Any other questions? No? Um, I just want to make one comment. Alicia, Shaun, can, and you can lead. Can you really thank all the staff on our behalf? Because I think we need to remind ourselves sometimes that the the staff were out there on the food banks. They were out there getting food together for people who were desperately in need. Um, they weren't sitting at home, they weren't suddenly sitting in some some little out of the way place. We know they were working very, very hard and they were also putting themselves at risk because a lot of them are actually going out into the communities themselves um, to deliver the food. So if you watch Shaun, Alicia, Kelly, please, please pass our thanks on to them. Because they've done a great job and we know literally in the future, when everything is back to whatever normal is going to be in the future, that we've got a great team there to to get the tourists back into the city and get our economy running again. So please, I think on behalf of the whole committee, pass on our thanks to everybody. Okay, we move on to, uh, thank you for that. The. Claire, again? The item number ten, without walls hospitality.
Sorry, thanks, Chair. And just to pick up on William's point, so without, just a bit of a positive history of without walls, which has got grown its old kind of arms and legs over the last, um, two months, two, three months. Without Walls came out of the City Recovery Plan, which was, um, kind of codenamed Project Greyhound. So when COVID hit, within two weeks, we'd started working on a project on a whole kind of regeneration recovery plan that was about projects that were shovel ready, ready to go, that could kind of move to the city as we kind of, as we got, as we got out of the pandemic. So on one hand, we were dealing with the needy and 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 the poor, the people who really needed us. On the other hand, we were looking forward and thinking, how do we kind of keep business? How do we kind of get the city moving again as soon as it's set to do so? So Without Walls was a concept that we put in the recovery plan, which was basically looking at when, um, businesses, especially small businesses, and Bill Addy is is on is on this, as in advisory members from the select committee and is here. We've we've set up a, um, group of business leaders, Chamber, the, um, the bid, um, downtown. There's a whole load of business leaders saying, how do we get ourselves out of this? And one of the big things that came up was around small businesses. So that small independent sector that we all really love in this city, that's grown in this city over the last ten years. How on earth are they going to be thinking about how to be COVID safe, get their business going when they're worrying about paying the bills? So we had, um, we had a conversation with the mayor. We looked at where we could, where we could realign money from. We had capital money within our halls fund that was, that 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 had been agreed by by council. And we moved some capital money into a project called Without Walls that was specifically to give small grants to businesses to buy chairs and tables, which seems a very simple thing. But if any of you who know people who work in that sector, they weren't thinking about anything apart from survival. So for the council to step in and say, we'll sort all that out for you, I think was an incredible decision, decision by the mayor. We also wanted to kind of look at different ways of using the city. So the two streets in the city centre we closed, very, we closed were Bold Street and Castle Street. Bold Street, we took a unique approach to, which was looking at parklets. So we looked at buying parklets for Bold Street to give it a real European kind of sense of quality, sense of place, sense of when you arrived, you were somewhere that was really incredible and that would look really beautiful. So and that came under the bid's licence. So that was relatively easy to do. Still some issues, you know, you close the road, you put a lot of restaurants on the street, it's not that easy. It was, it was a risk. And then used the kind of, I think, universally popular on Bold Street and Castle Street. Castle Street was a different situation. Castle Street, we allowed, um, we shut the roads. We allowed restaurants to come out in Castle Street. We gave them bits of money to buy their own furniture, which is why it looks slightly more Mediterranean in some ways than than Bold Street. Um, the challenge we've got now is the feedback we've got on both those streets has been amazing. Obviously some teething problems, you know, I'll be really honest with you, we did it really quickly. Um, we did it really quickly because we're in a pandemic and we needed to make some quick decisions. And we had to get money out to those businesses as quickly as possible. So we've learned a lot on the way. Um, and then interestingly, lots of other cities have learned from us. It's been a model that has been talked about recently. Um, it's great. Now, that Lark Lane was, is a different kettle of fish. Lark Lane was a traffic management, um, response to a area that is very heavily pedestrianised. Um, but with the pavements weren't wide enough to have the pedestrians and the cafes on them at the same time. So the Lark Lane, and that's why I think there's an interesting conversation about residential areas and city centre areas. Lark Lane, we've had, we have had some challenges with, we've been out to visit all the businesses now, highways have been out there. They've talked to all the businesses, they're looking at a rejigging of that scheme to sue, um, to kind of come to a compromise with the residents and the businesses. But again, um, the feedback from the businesses in general along that line has been really, really positive. Because they've made through Without Walls initiative and through Eat Out to Help Out, they've, 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 they've made money, you know. And that, I think that's really important, um, at this time when they've, when they've lost such a lot of money very, very, very quickly. Um, we're looking now at the next stage of Without Walls. So what we do with it in the winter, you know, we will, we will go out to consultation about as to the two roads that we've shut. So do we, um, keep the pedestrianisation of Castle Street and of Bold Street? Do we look to do some useful winter lighting so that we can keep people coming out in the city? We all know what the weather's like in Liverpool. Um, so we're looking at all the different kind of connotations of that. Um, but we're learning as we go along. We've asked the city region to do an economic impact assessment for us on that money. We think it's going to be significant in terms of return the city's got on it. Um, and if you don't mind, Chair, just, I think if Bill Addy's still on, it might just be worth hearing from business just very quickly on it before we take questions. Bill, are you still on?
Uh, I am. Uh, Chair, if, uh, well, I would just. Yeah, I would just echo Chair Claire's comments on that. And really, it was a remarkable initiative. It moved very quickly to respond to what was an absolute disaster for the sector. We know that, we know what the visitor economy means for for Liverpool. The fact that Claire's just indicated that forty, is it forty eight percent of the city's business rates come from that sector? So we had to do something very quick and for you to be able to do what you've you've done very quick shows how we've, we've had partnership working across the private sector and the council, which has been an excellent way of working. Yes, there've been some issues, but in the main, it's been very well received. And the fact that we've had two and a half thousand additional covers throughout August. And in fact, if you look at the Eat Out to Help Out figures nationally, Liverpool was third, wasn't it? And then across the nation in terms of the benefit from Eat Out to Help Out. And what that means is that the businesses will have resources going into the autumn that will enable them when furlough disappears in four weeks' time, able them to retain staff, because that's what it's all about. It's about keeping people employed and very often in the, in the visitor economy, in the hospitality sector, it's young people. Um, and it's young people, uh, often on low paid, um, jobs, we know that. Why it's important that we can keep those, that sector going and keep those jobs going. So, and it allows us to build on something. We are in, we're in a very difficult and unusual situation. So I I think the the work that the council offers and the the private sector together was able to deliver on it. It was an excellent example of how this city does pull together in in times like this.
All right, thanks, Bill. Claire? Okay, questions, please? William?
Castle Short, old chair.
Yes, sorry, yeah, thanks for that. Uh, I I quite enjoyed the report and I suppose it was a great success. I don't live in the city, so I enjoyed coming in and I suppose I should not pay everyone a compliment. From from my part of view, it's been an excellent success. There might be some issues, but I don't know about them. But from where I stand, it's been a great success. I want to compliment everyone. It's been on reports, I just want to be sure that the economic impact report that we're getting on the twenty two to ten, that is set out to all our members. So updating as soon as possible, be able to handle. I think it's really important. But I want to compliment everyone, I think Without Walls has been an absolute success for me. I enjoy coming into town and, uh, spending money. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Castle Tulane, Chair.
Malia?
Can I speak now? Um, thanks, Claire. Thanks for the update. I think you know it's been a big success as one of the councils in the city centre and getting some feedback from the businesses. You've had really great feedback. So I think, and I've heard that obviously other cities um, are trying to find out how Liverpool have delivered it so quickly and so well. So I know that it's been, um, a big success for for us throughout the country as well. Just add a couple of questions actually, Claire. One of them, um, was about the without walls. Um, now I know Castle Street's been opened up and Bold Street, and they've been really successful. Um, are you, uh, because obviously I know it's a resource issue because it's very work intensive. Are there plans to open any other streets and roads? And, um, obviously, as you said, we're coming into the winter, so it's not so easy. But are there, I just wanted to know if there were plans to open other parts of the city or?
The couple, we're looking at a couple more streets. I mean, we've got to kind of balance it with 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 obviously transport and and things. So we've done these two very quickly. We've still got to work out, we've got to do a consultation as to whether we close, we keep Bold Street and Castle Street closed. And I think we'll, we'll take advice from businesses and residents on that. There are other streets that people are talking about, but again, we'd want to do a pop up on these. These might all happen because we're in a crisis. I think when we do stuff, um, when we're talking about closing other roads, we probably need to do it slightly over a longer period to have a discussion. But it's been a huge success and people have loved it and we've had a great summer, haven't we? So, um, yeah, yeah, we will look, we will look at other streets as they come up and Bill's got lots of ideas.
Malia, you're on, you're on mute. Thank you. Do you want to come back, Malia?
Yeah, just very briefly, because I know we've got a lot to go through. There was just a couple of places I was interested in, Claire. Um, and I know Laura, hopefully Laura's still on the, on the call. It was the George's Quarter by the museums. I was really interested in seeing if we could do some kind of weekend market there, some craft markets. Um, and another area which I was interested in, because I live nearby, is the Cleveland Square, which is just at the top of, um, or whatever you look at it, Paradise Street, opposite Mersey Made.
I'm not there, I'm not there.
So, so, uh, so it's, um, so it's basically, um, when you're going into Duke Street, you've got a tiny estate on the side and there's an, there's a square just there. And because the Baltic Triangle is is a little bit further away, we've got lots of traffic that comes to that area that go past. Um, and I know that we probably could pick a lot of, you know, trade up in that area. And I've spoken to Mersey Made and other few traders and they'd be quite interested. So should I email you those details, Claire? Um, and and the George's Quarter on, which I'd be really interested in. I think is that, is that a National Museums area though? I don't think the council own that area, do they?
Sounds like, um, and Laura owns the buildings. We're, so we are, we own, we own the street, Laura owns.
So will it? Really well finished now, because I know we've got lots of people who want to talk. Is there any, I don't know if Laura's still on the call, but could we get the fountain maybe turned on, um, outside the the museum?
That that would be us.
Yeah, for Laura. Is Laura on the call?
Laura Payes indicated.
I am, I am. So it's not, it's not National Museums Liverpool's, it is the councils. So the fountain and the road belongs to the council, not to National Museums Liverpool. We only own the buildings, not the road. Um, although we are grateful to the fact that the council has given us permission for us to move our own cafes onto the pavements. And we would welcome more activity on William Brown Street.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Chair, we also have indicated, councillor Anna Key.
Anna, please.
Yeah, so I I wanted to address, um, the the point about Lark Lane specifically. So I understand that Without Walls in principle, it's it's an excellent initiative. However, in Lark Lane, things have gone pear shaped and we've been informing, um, council offices and the cabinet member, and executive about numerous seizing issues for for many months now. So it's not accessible for disabled people. There are, there are serious, serious issues with those so-called ramps that have been made, but are just, are dangerous. There are health and safety issues because the red bollards, that are totally not in keeping with, uh, the character of Lark Lane. Um, they are being vandalised and stubs are being left. So, uh, so so far we had three accidents about people, with people tripping and to one an ambulance was called. Uh, Claire, you're saying that local businesses are supportive of it. However, in Lark Lane, there are numerous local businesses who are just, just not in favour of it at all. They, they complain and they're saying that it's taken customers away from them. Residents are despairing about it. Um, the problem, the problem we have, the major problem is that there's a complete lack of enforcement. There's lack of licensing enforcement. Businesses are doing what they want, serving alcohol to outside, even though they have to bring, bring the chairs in. And there's, um, a lack of highways enforcement, policing. Lark Lane is one way, is a one way system, but cars go in both, both, both ways and also in surrounding streets. And there's a lack of parking enforcement, fast cash pack wherever, wherever, wherever they please. And there's no effect on neighbouring streets. Numerous residents complain from Ivanhoe Road and other streets. And, you know, I can, I can, I can go on. So, you know, whilst, whilst a, a, a scheme is definitely very well meaning. Um, and whilst I understand that there was, there was very little time to put it in place, there have been months now to to put it right. And I just, I just don't know why, why we're still still talking about it. Why everything that we're raising is falling on deaf ears?
All right, and I'll just, I'll just respond to a couple of those, those issues there. A lot of the issues that you're talking about are highways issues. So the reason, I mean, obviously the bollards are are an issue, you know, no one can look at, look at Wendy's laughing, she knows me and bollards. But nobody can look at an orange and an orange bollard and love it. But the reason why the orange bollards are there, just to be really clear, is around, is absolutely around safety. It's around highways, we challenge it, you know, you can't have a highway and not have those kind of bollards. So it is a safety issue, the bollards. The Without Walls initiative is to give grants to businesses to buy chairs and tables to come outside. And many of the businesses on Lark Lane have applied for that money. Now, you can't have them coming outside if you've got nowhere else for people, people to walk. And that's why the the highway has been closed. We also did, um, we worked very closely on doing a one way system, which I think people have really liked. The feedback we've got from businesses, we've been out to consult, the highways team have been out to consult with businesses. And they've really liked the one way system down Lark Lane because they believe it's safer. We're now going back to businesses with all the responses, all the consultation that they've done. And it's taken a while to do that consultation, it's twenty two businesses that we've talked to. And we're going to review the scheme. We've always said it was temporary and it was absolutely done for completely the right reasons. And there were some great stories from it as well. So it's not all, you know, it's not all bad. There are some great things that have happened from, from, from that scheme. But we've always said we will listen and we will change things as we go along because it's changed, you know. it is a big change for Lark Lane. I live around there, I completely get it. But it's absolutely done for the right reason. It's done for the right reasons, to help those businesses survive, also to make sure that people aren't hurt when they're walking up and down Lark Lane. So we will absolutely, we're going in this week and over the next two weeks, you'll see some changes. Anna, we're going to do a conversation with the local councillors around what those changes will be, which will refine the scheme and its temporary nature. Remember, it is a temporary scheme. It was put in because we are in the middle of a pandemic, not because, you know, it was an idea. It's to, to kind of cope with the Covid crisis. But we will be talking to you this week and there will be some changes that will happen down Lark Lane. But many, many of them have applied for the grants as well, many of the businesses.
Chair, councillor Christine.
Hang on, Anna wants to come back.
Okay.
Anna?
Thanks, Jeff. Just to be absolutely clear, I am not questioning the intentions of the scheme. I do agree that it was good. I have an issue with the execution of the scheme, which in my view, could have been a lot better. And also, I have, I have an issue with the stewardship of the scheme, as in, you know, complete lack of enforcement. But I welcome that you're going to come and talk to us and perhaps some good changes will come out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine? You're on mute, Chris? You're on mute? Christine? Christine, you're on mute? Christine, you're on mute?
We can let breathe.
Bloody hell, laddie. You're not on mute. Get it back. Has anybody told this is on mute other than me? Peter?
Can you put it on the chat?
Yeah, I've got Colleen Martin and Wendy Simon indicated.
I know, but Christine, you're on mute?
Can you put it on the chat now? Speak loud, then. Yeah.
I don't think she can hear us. Peter, who else do we go?
Colleen Martin and the cabinet member chair.
Colleen, we thank Chrissie if you come on the phone or something.
It's, it's just a very quick response, Chair, in terms of councillor Key's points around enforcement. We do regularly visit Lark Lane with all our enforcement officers and we undertake a significant amount of consultation with the businesses. Just this past weekend, we've, we've done the same again. So we, it was just to say that whilst councillor Key may feel that there isn't activity, there absolutely is and we are responding to the concerns that are being raised. So, but if she's got any specific details, if you'd please send those to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wendy?
Yeah, I was just in liaison with the cabinet member for highways and also licensing and stuff in relation to Sharon Connor. I know she's done a number of walkabouts in the area. She has met with local residents, she's met with local businesses. I know the staff has. So I know perhaps it feels like kind of that not a lot has been done, but actually, it has. Maybe all the results haven't been achieved, what residents have been asking for as yet. But I think it was a little bit unfair to say, you know, nothing has happened. I think at the beginning, and as people said, it was a very quick response and we did say, things might not go right. And certainly for a number of people. And I know because I was, I've spoken to another myself as well, I was copied into quite a few emails, you know, that balance where you've got a residential area as opposed to, you know, sort of a city centre where you can accommodate things in a different way. Is although we do have a lot of residents in the city centre as well, that we've had to consult with in relation to Without Walls, in respect of the wider issues that people raised about other areas, and particularly Maria. When the scheme came out, it wasn't specific to the city centre or Lark Lane. They were areas that were seen before, in a sense, to be done quickly and to be look at how the scheme would work as pilots as we moved forward in looking at how we could help to support this industry. And certainly, I know in other areas, and where they may not even use the Without Walls scheme. So like in County, Roy, in your ward, and certainly where they're already doing stuff around the high streets. And all the words there are looking at the scheme and lessons they can learn from it. So going forward, it was a very quick response. I think it was, should we do something or should we wait till we get everything right? And then the summer would be over and a lot of those businesses might, might have gone out. But of course, the residents have real issues. I think the issue around enforcement in general is one that's been spoken about before, not just here, but at the other committees. It's a massive issue for the city council, given our reduction of staff and what, one we have to look at. It's not unique to Lark Lane enforcement in a lot of our communities around, you know, issues around parking, around licensing, you know, around fly tipping, et cetera. Lots of those things are, you know, massive issues that are impacting on communities. And I think that's not just within this scheme. But certainly, I know all those issues are being looked at. And certainly, both myself and Sharon John mainly led on the highway side of it. But I know there is quite an active group there as well, who've fed in a lot of their funds that they've had for the area for a while as well, that have been looked at.
Councillor, Councillor Shortall, Chair.
William?
I just want to record in the community, I think it's been a great success and I would thank all the staff and for everything they've done because I just say it's been done on a fast turn around here. And I'd just like to add that, please, thanks for all the work you've done.
Okay, anybody else? Can I then just sum up very quickly? Again, Claire, thanks to you and whoever come up with this brilliant idea because it really was, I think it gave a lot of people a little bit confidence whilst things are a little bit darker. I never like throwing cold water on anyone. Well, just throw a few drops of warm over me then. As Wendy said, without walls, it's fine. City centre, Lark Lane, we have a lot of high streets outside of the city centre. I had, I had three businesses that actually applied for the grant and we're told that it's all gone. So, you know, the likes of my area never even got a look in. I understand, but Wendy said it is very quickly done and it's there. But if we can, we have a lot of high streets outside, they're also struggling. And if we're going to come up with some ideas, not just for the likes of County, but likes of Club Murb, Broadway, all those, all those areas, I think we should look at that next because all those outside of the city centre are also suffering. And if we can do whatever we can, I'd be most obliged. Okay, but finishing then again, as I said, thank you very much for this report.
Chair, the next item is item 11. You have an impact report on the leisure services.
Okay, who is it? Colleen and Mike?
So Chair, in the interest of, yes, sorry, Chair, in the, the interest of time, and I'm just conscious of the committee's time, we're, we're working to the fact that the team have been working tremendously hard. But I think in the interest of time, if we assume everyone's read the report and we're happy to take any questions from the committee.
Any questions, colleagues?
Councillor Doyle, Chair.
Harry?
It's pleasure, of course. Just a quick one. First of all, thank you again to all the staff. I know we thanked them loads, but as a service user, it's been absolutely fantastic to be back in the leisure centres. Where the question is, when I can get into the leisure centres? So obviously, with the booking system, which is fantastic, the aquatic centre, for example, which is, I'm having to go to personally. There are a number of people that can't access it because it's fully booked for the whole week, basically. I think there's a massive demand on.
Harry, can I, can I just, can I just jump in for the moment? Just to let people know, the battery on mine's going, so I'm going to turn the video off. So at least I'll be able to hear you. You just have to pull up with somebody better looking than me.
Oh, don't put yourself, put yourself down, Roy. No, so just, just wondering, obviously, the likes of Peter Lloyd, Everton not opening yet, do we have a sort of end goal in date to reintroduce that service? Just so that we can take a bit of pressure off and make sure that members can kind of have access to the centres?
It's been reluctant, Harry, to give dates because then people are sort of holding you to those dates and we're towards that. What we've tried to say is when, as you could imagine, the different roles that the leisure centres are playing now and how it's having to be managed, takes a lot more stress, you know, with the shit, et cetera, and how we do that. So all we're saying at the moment is we're working really hard to get them all open as soon as possible to the public. And I just think it's really unfair of us to ourselves to say, we hope it won't be bad then because if something happens. And sometimes other things happen. I mean, a bit like Peter Lloyd, there've been that many repair things there outside. Yeah, that's what sometimes happens, like, you know, sort of throwing another thing. But we're certainly, and particularly, so that we know Peter Lloyd is one of our biggest, you know, to really contribute to centre. And we've got, obviously, leisure centres that like to speak, who are quite far out, you know, and don't have a lot of resources in that area. So all of them are looking at ways to get open as soon as possible. Likewise with the libraries. And as I said, as soon as we can, what the new guidance will be because of the increase in Covid as well, we're unsure. Obviously, it's not impacting on gyms at the moment, but we've also got to keep our minds out of that. And also, you know, sort of the staffing, that's another issue for us, where we've got people who are either self-isolating themselves or they've got children and childcare issues and schools closing, you know, there's a whole other issues around here other than just making it safe, that impact on how many we can have at any one time. But certainly, you know, I know it's really frustrating. I get lots of emails from, you know, particularly Everton Park, you know, there's a user group, a solid user group. We've been using that for quite a number of years, who, you know, really are missing like everybody else and they don't want to go anywhere else. And sometimes people haven't got the capacity to go anywhere else, you know, and don't want to be travelling through different things. So we are working really hard. And as I said earlier, when I was doing my report, I'll get updates on leisure centres and libraries outside. Won't be waiting till the November meeting. I'll get them out to everyone. So we can give you an overview where we're at with it.
Thank you, Wendy.
Councillor Shortall, Chair.
William?
Just a quick question. It said on page 88, operational changes, no cash payments. Is that legal? Is it legal not to take cash? I don't know if it's legal not to take cash.
Yeah, it's Jordanus Christ, it is.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Chair, that takes you to item number 12, which again is another update on the impact on the library and information service.
So again, Chair, thank you, Chair, sorry. Again, Chair, for the sake of these, I will say one thing in terms of the credit that you paid to David Stoker at the beginning of the meeting. David has done a phenomenal job keeping the staff going and absolutely, and pulling together this report before, before he left us for his retirement, to start his retirement. What I would say is whilst, even though the libraries have been closed, the staff have actually been very, very busy and particularly draw attention to people's, people's attention, sorry, to the home library service and the eBooks and the advice inquiry services, which have continued to, continue throughout the Covid period, even when the libraries were closed. We've expanded the home library service. And again, much as councillor Simon has mentioned, we are continuing to look at and review the opening, but are doing so to make sure that public safety is paramount. So again, I won't say anything further, but happy to take any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions? Okay, can I move that? The select committee and all the services were maintained and extended throughout the pandemic. The hardworking commitments of library and archive staff and the plug that's being made in recovery by the libraries and information service. And again, just supporting what's being said about the marvellous staff we have. So agreed? Item 13.
Chair, your draft work programme has been circulated to members of the committee. I've had no comments back and it's for you to approve.
Is that agreed? Thank you.
Chair, item 14 is your schedule of meetings, which as members may be aware, the group leaders and WIPS agreed a condensed work programme across the select committees. And those dates, you have two more dates as indicated on the agenda. Let's approve again.
Everybody agreed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. That takes us to item 15, which is the question time. And there are three questions which have been received in relation to the zip wire proposal from Mr Jerry Proctor and Jana Naguchi and Mr Terry Clark. We have just before, an hour or so before the meeting, emailed the detailed responses to all members of the committee, which they should have in their email boxes. And again, the responses are to endorse, Chair. The cabinet member may wish to comment.
Anything you wish to add, Wendy?
Not specifically in relation to, obviously, if those people who've asked the questions, sometimes they may come back with supplementaries. Obviously, if they do, we'll make sure the committee is furnished with those responses to those questions as well.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay. No comments, questions? Thank you.
Chair, I can close the business.
Can I just come in, Chair, because my screen blanked and then I couldn't get in and I couldn't press the screen. That okay?
You did, we were asking, you were telling you, we were listening, but you were muted.
Yeah. No, well, I'm going to leave mute. I'm on mute. Just quickly, the wall without sissies, the city without walls. The thing is, I'm wired with, because we have teams, we have Claire's team, the bid, licensing, police, and the pub watch, and the bars and nightclubs. We all work together. And when the small businesses, if there was any problem, we actually went out because we had a team that went out and visited the small businesses to make sure they were okay, that they got what they want, that they get help. We even helped with Martin Youngrits. That team, his team needs stars and stars and stars. But the amount of work they did, Claire's team, the bid, licensing, there was a lot of enforcement, licensing enforcement going on. And I can tell you by the amount of, Malcolm Kelly, you know, back there, licensing committee meetings we've had over the past couple of weeks and will continue to. The other thing is, it's just a question because I was told last year about the fountain was owned by the art gallery. That's where it gets switched on. Am I right? No? Okay. Well, we'll get to that another time, Laura, if I can get in touch with you. But the reason and the problems that we did face from the beginning of the city without walls was actually, we targeted every possible way to meet and to get it up in Roman. And it's all those, all those, the bid, Claire's team, licensing, the police, the bars themselves, when they all got together. Because we had three or four meetings at the beginning, at the opening, and then the bars and the walls without sissies. And I think that's why it moved because we had this positive partnership working. And just to say thanks to all of them, we're still doing it and we actually are still going out and meeting businesses. What important is going on?
Thanks, Chris. The reason I let you come back in is that you were muted before and I knew you were trying to, you were trying to get in, so you missed the opportunity. So thank you for your contribution. I'm sure the staff thank you as well.
Chair, Councillor Shortall's indicating with me.
What's this? I'm on the other business. We haven't got any. William?
Yeah, just one thing, Chair.
I've been good. Come on.
Yeah. In terms of the St George's Hall, at the virtual cabinet on Friday, the details of the virtual of St George's Hall, the basis of it went through and I know that obviously, you know, as far as the book, we didn't discuss anything in our notes or possibly in our paperwork, but we are meant to be scrutinised at St George's Hall. And so I just thought that in future that we should get anything that's happened to St George's Hall in our paperwork, in our paperwork, just for nothing else.
Wendy?
In previous meetings, we've looked at capital developments when Auntie Red has come and done the city access report. In previous meetings, going forward, the capital programme. in previous meetings going forward, the capital programme of the repairs to the town hall, St George's Hall and Crockstone Hall, I was nodding, so people are going to be calling that we're brought here. So you have had that in advance, that report going to cabinets, they go through in phases. So the overall report is done about what the capital repairs done. And then as it's going through, it will go through cabinet. So it has been here, William. To last year, it came and you get brought the report last year. Quite often, there's a big gap between the report being presented at the select committee and some of the implementation. So that's what will have happened. So the report did come here. Obviously, anytime if you ever see things on cabinet reports, when you're looking at other committees in relation to culture, and I've been after the last two weeks. But, you know, apart from that, you know, I'm always saying, just, just give me an email if you're unsure whether it's been. And we can always point you to the report because sometimes, you know, we do get a lot of reports here, as is tonight. Sometimes a number of months later, you can forget. Also, it could have been on a report before you were on the committee or something like that. So if you ever just want to check it out, just let us know.
I would, I would also extend what Wendy said. If there is questions, as you just, as you just mentioned, we've got our own officers who are there anyway. So if there is any questions, William, in future, ask them. If you can't get an answer, then we'll take it that little bit further. Okay, then can I seriously thank everybody for your patience this evening? It isn't the best system, but it's the only one that we've got in operation at the moment with everything that's happening. So please, all I can say from my point of view, with everything that's happening in the city at the moment, keep safe, keep well, and I hope to see you very soon. And good night. Thank you.